All right, we'll call the Finance and Law Committee to order. First of all, calling the roll, Mr. DeMello.
Present.
Mr. Fiore is present, Mr. Enos is absent. First, we have no student activities on the agenda. Second, we have two bills payable warrants. One is for $745,883.19 for fiscal year 22. And then there's a single bill from fiscal year 21 in the amount of $12,219.39. It's from W.B. Mason for supplies.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the motion, but I'd like to separate them out if you don't mind. So for FY 21, everything is in order. I move a motion that we approve the amount of $12,219.39 for FY 21.
All right, and I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, six of five saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed so voted.
And, Mr. Chairman, for FY 22, I also reviewed the warrant. Everything is in perfect places. And I move a motion that we approve FY 22 in the amount of $745,883.19.
Chair will second that. Makes my life easier. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, six of five is saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed so voted. Then we have update on the special education legal expenses. The invoice for January 22 was $8,082.90. Fiscal year to date is $20,689.51. So we are showing a considerable savings in that department. Motion be ordered to receive and placed on file?
So moved.
Chair seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed so voted. And Mrs. Moynihan informs me there's no facilities update. Anything else for the good of the order of superintendent, assistant superintendent?
Motion to adjourn?
Chair seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're out of here.
Call the meeting to order if you could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Please remain standing for prayer.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And we have several announcements on people who have recently passed. The first is Michael, so we'd like a moment of silence after I finish reading most. Michael George, who many of you know was the owner of Colonial Donut Shop. I used to, when I first came to Taunton, I thought that that was the happiest place on earth. I went in there and everybody was smiling, including him. He had a huge smile and such a welcoming, friendly place. And it's nice to remember that because it seems a lot of people are too friendly too much anymore. But he certainly had a nice way about him, and I'm sure his family's going to miss him dearly. Two of his children are employed by the school department and one of his son-in-law. So we are really sorry to hear the passing of Michael George, who really had to be one of the nicest people on earth. Next person is Evelyn Enos, who is the mother, was the mother of a school committee person. Gilly Enos, a new person on the school committee. Wonderful woman. I remember coming to Taunton and hearing about the restaurant that they owned, Leashes. Wonderful family, she had four sons. Several of us attended her funeral. And you could tell this was a woman that was really loved and cherished by her family. So our sympathies go out to the Enos family. Then there's Christina J. Gosling, mother of six children. And one of them is her son Lauren, who works for the school department. He's a custodian, longtime custodian in the building. Very large family, a lot of grandchildren. And our sympathies go out to this family for the loss of their mother. And the last one, but not least, is Richard T. Castle, who was the second son of Edward Castle, who was the principal of Hopewell School. Coincidentally, I live in this neighborhood where they all lived, Davis Street, Shore Street. This is where the Castles were and the Fagans. And just a wonderful family. He had a great sense of humor. For a while, he was a substitute in the teacher, and he was married to one of our teachers who taught over at, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm missing his wife, Karen, I'm sorry. Karen Walsh Castle, who was a longtime teacher at Martin School. So he is dearly missed by his family. He had a great sense of humor, like his father. Any of you that knew Eddie Castle knew that if you were going to be with him, you were going to laugh. So our sympathies and our prayers go out to these four individuals and to their families. And may God help all of them through this difficult time. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I think we should also mention, Michael George's family included his similarly-named cousin, Michael George, who was a coach at Taunton High School for years and my geometry teacher. And his uncle, Peter George, was the headmaster of Taunton High School.
Thank you very much for that. Roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Blowski?
Present.
Mr. Enos is absent, Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagans, present, Mr. Viera?
Present.
Mr. George?
Present.
Mr. Laura?
Present.
Chairman DeMello?
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present, thank you. The Student Advisory Committee report. Tonight, we have with us Nicole Drake and Hector Aponte. Oh, excuse me, yeah, thank you. Approval of the minutes of March 2, 2022.
Motion to move.
Second.
Motion made in second, did all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. I was just so anxious to hear from you.
There's been a lot of great things going on at Taunton High. Last week was World Language and Cultural Diversity Week. And the theme was Celebrate Humanity Through Language, which was really nice because there were various events and activities throughout the whole week that all of the students and staff got to enjoy, and it was very nice. Each day had a certain theme, so Monday was World Arts Day. Tuesday was Social Justice Day. Wednesday was World Language Day. And Thursday was Cultural Wednesday Day, which was my personal favorite because we got to see a whole panel of students and staff from diverse backgrounds. And they shared their own personal stories from their cultures and experiences. And it was a really moving thing to watch. And there were also a bunch of activities for us all to experience, like a bake sale of international goods at lunch, an international menu at lunch, raffles, library displays, and a poster contest. The whole week was put together so well, and it helped promote cultural awareness, encourage the study of world languages, and really celebrate the diversity from Taunton High's own community. Another fun event that took place for students was Mr. THS, which was held on March 8 and coordinated by Student Council. So 10 contestants competed in five categories, with Jack Gobin being crowned Mr. THS at the end. It was definitely a fun experience for everyone involved and everyone who attended. And another upcoming event that students are looking for as well is Taunton High's own version of March Madness, which will serve as a fundraiser for the senior class. And Taunton High's clubs have also been very active. And it's so great to see students be so involved in all of them and participating in all the events and participating in the community as a whole. A big one was DECA, which held mock states at the beginning of the month to give state competitors an opportunity to get some extra practicing for the actual state conference. And 76 competitors worked hard and competed at the state conference last weekend, with 14 moving on to the International Career Development Conference, which is being held next month, and 23 attending this conference as a whole to participate in DECA's Emerging Leader Series. The leadership spots were owned from chapter campaigns, and everyone in the club worked really hard to make this happen, so it's great. And it's really a fantastic opportunity. And we're very excited for our hard-working competitors to win DECA Glass in Atlanta and finally be at an in-person conference. Also, last weekend, several members from Taunton High Student Council attended the MAS C annual conference. So this was run by the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils, which is one of the nation's most highly-regarded programs of activities for high schoolers. And it was such a great opportunity for students to learn and apply leadership skills in a real-life setting. The National Honor Society will be holding its induction ceremony next Wednesday at 6:00 in the auditorium. And on March 18, we also have several students volunteering at the Junior Achievement Program, High School Heroes. And they'll be going into classrooms here at E-Pole and teaching JA curriculum to first-grade students, which is really great because it gives students a chance to develop and practice personal development skills like leadership, teamwork, interpersonal communication, organization, and presentation. And as for sports, the winter season was very successful with numerous accomplishments along the way. The basketball team made a great run in the playoffs, and the hockey team also made an appearance in the playoff tournament. The track and field team had numerous athletes make great strides with the season, and the wrestling team also performed tremendously. The spring season is right around the corner and begins on Monday, so we really hope for a good season with continued success. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. You know, and once again, it's so wonderful to hear all of the achievements of our students here at Taunton High every week when you guys come and tell us. I look forward to the next week to hear what else is going to be happening. And the leadership skills that you're building are pretty incredible and will serve everyone well. Thank you. At this time, we have public input. Mr. DeMello?
In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23(c), we kindly request that individuals wishing to provide public input sign up in advance. A copy of the regulation and guidelines will be provided upon sign-up, and individuals will be asked to state their name and address for the record. The amount of time each registered individual will have to speak will be determined by the number of people who signed the register and will be announced prior to the start of the public input portion of the meeting. Mr. Vine, we having public input?
No public input, ma'am.
No public input, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Taunton Public Schools Special Programs Presentation, Mr. Carrow.
Thank you. Just a couple minutes, Mr. Barata. Thank you, Chris, for addressing the lights. And Marcus, thank you, firing up the presentation. So as we're getting the presentation ready on the screen, there've been several requests and also many comments made by school committee members and also made in the public regarding parents, caregivers, you know, the community having access or having the knowledge regarding the different programs that we offer here in the Taunton Public Schools. So Mr. Barata, working with the Director of Student Services, or Director of Transportation and Student Services, they compiled a pretty lengthy presentation to provide school board members with some insight into special programs. As you're also aware, we also do have a subcommittee that is chaired, I believe, by chairperson Derek George to oversee special programs in the Taunton Public Schools. So I would like to take this moment just to educate the school committee members, especially the new members to the school committee, of the numerous programs that we offer to all our students and to all our families. So the first program, or one of the programs that we offer here in the Taunton Public Schools is RISE. And many have always asked, what does RISE stand for? What does the acronym RISE represent? So RISE stands for Reaching Independence Through Structured Education Programs. They currently exist at the elementary and middle school levels, specifically located at Easton Elementary School, Mulcahy Elementary School, and Martin Middle School. Students diagnosed with intellectual and/or have a diagnosis which falls within the spectrum of autism are provided with the required support in the RISE programs positioned or stationed throughout our school system. In addition to RISE, we also have the TLC program, or the Therapeutic Learning Centers. The therapeutic learning centers currently exist at the elementary and middle school level, specifically located at the Joseph C. Chamberlain Elementary and the Benjamin A. Freeman Middle School. Students diagnosed with emotional challenges, which impedes their ability to successfully navigate the general education environment demands, with support are referred to these programs. I also feel it should be noted, in addition to the RISE program, the TLC program, the placement of students into programs such as the TLC and RISE program above are determined by the special education team and require an individual education plan. The ELC program is a program, or the ELC program at the Taunton Public Schools is the Early Learning Center program, which services students diagnosed with significant learning or communication challenges and is provided, with, students are provided with supports, and that is housed here at the Elizabeth Pole Elementary School. Again, students assigned to this program must also have a diagnosed, or must have a diagnosis which requires an IEP. At the high school level, we have several programs. We have the Alert program, which supports students with intellectual challenges. We have the Alternative Learning Center, which supports students with emotional challenges. And we have transitional opportunities for pre-vocational skills, which supports students with intellectual or emotional challenges who are between the ages of 18 and 22 years old. I believe many of you have heard about the Newcomers Academy. The Taunton Public Schools provides newcomer academies, NCA, all three grade spans, located here at the Elizabeth Pole Elementary School, at John F. Parker Middle School, and at Taunton High School. Students who have non- or extremely limited English speaking and comprehension skills are provided with intense, intensive, and individualized instruction to develop and nurture their English language skills while preserving and respecting their native language. Next, we have the STRI program. The STRI program was established at Taunton High School in 2018 through a competitive nine-year grant with the High Point Treatment Center in Brockton. Presently, there are two full-time clinicians and a therapeutic mentor located at the high school. This program provides substance use counseling services as well as therapeutic support services to students. And you'll notice that the programs we are referencing now do not require a diagnosis or an individual education plan. So this is open to all students at the high school. The Student Support Team, this services students across all grade levels. The Student Support Team consists of school psychologist Dr. Linda Watt, Director of Student Services and Transportation Kathleen Perry, and Director of Special Education Amy Moynihan. The district team works closely with building-based guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, and teachers to create support plans for students who are struggling with behavioral and academic issues. Meetings are held bimonthly via Zoom. Actually, Mrs. Perry and the team were in meetings all day long today, working with many students and staff in our schools. The Mind Up Curriculum, this was, this came about through one of our CITs during my first year as superintendent. And I believe it was a three-year process to adopt the Mind Up Curriculum, which covers grades pre-K through 7. So the Mind Up Curriculum is a research-based program used in every classroom at the Edward F. Letty School and across all elementary and middle schools' classrooms, too. Teachers are provided with daily lessons, including videos and question-based lessons. Lessons are focused on the five domains of social-emotional learning. The Family Welcome Center, which was created under Dr. Hackett's tenure as superintendent. The Family Welcome Center has only grown and demonstrated a greater need during the pandemic and as we come out of the pandemic, to provide that bridge between families and schools. The Family Welcome Center provides wraparound supports to students and families in all grades. The Family Welcome Center is located at the John F. Parker Middle School. The staff includes 10 community facilitators, a foster care liaison, and other support staff to assist families with registration, basic family needs, and many other resources. Community facilitators are assigned to school buildings. In addition, community facilitators are assigned to the Family Welcome Center on a rotating basis once a week. The contact person, should anyone watching this presentation require support or services, can reach out to Kathleen Callahan here at the superintendent's office. Kathleen Perry, thank you, Mrs. Moynihan. And we also have school-based or districts groups and committees. So each school has both a parent-teacher partnership, otherwise known as PTOs or PTUs. Additionally, each school has a site council in compliance with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regulations. The district, in conjunction with parents, has a special education parent advisory council, or CPAC. This group has been very well-established here in the Taunton Public Schools. And this year, the district has begun the process of establishing an English Language Learner Parent Advisory Council, or LPAC. We also have several community-based partnerships here in the Taunton Public Schools that we are very proud of. So with Taunton Public Schools, has always had a very strong partnership with the Community Counseling of Bristol County, CCBC. We also have had a very strong partnership with the Community Crisis Intervention Team, and also CAC, which is the Children's Advocacy Center. So the Community Counseling of Bristol County, which supports all grades, we are presently contracted with the Community Counseling of Bristol County, and these are grant-funded. CCBC offers school-based counseling services as well as support groups through the access center at the high school. The CCIT, or the Community Crisis Intervention Team, the community-based forum focuses on problem-solving and inter-agency collaboration in response to an increasing number of challenging individuals in seemingly intractable situations in our community. It is a means of facilitating inter-agency communication, joint treatment plan development, and implementation. The conferencing group endorses the philosophy that it's not a matter of whose problem it is, rather it's a community's problem, and everyone has a stake in finding a solution. In CAC, the Children's Advocacy Center of Bristol County, provides professional development to staff on recognizing and assisting families and students who have been impacted by trauma. The contact person is Andrea Souza. And this year, for the first time that I can recall in quite a long time, the CAC is actually providing building-based support, professional development, for all our teachers and staff as what are the signs of abuse to be on the lookout, especially as students return to our buildings after the pandemic. So we are proud to offer that support to our staff. Community-based partnerships continued. We also have the Attendance Divergent Program, and we also have the Family Resource Center. Again, I won't read everything verbatim, but it's in your packet. And these are, these are programs that are very well-established here in the Taunton Public Schools. We have a strong partnership with the Taunton Area School of Career, which the school committee has supported with funding to provide supports to students who are, who are taking on internships and mentoring, or students being mentored by adults in our community, especially those in the business sector. We have a strong partnership with Bridgewater State University, Student Success Coaches, which I believe we have 15 providing support or typical, some type of wraparound academic support in our schools. And we also have the Bridgewater State University's Reading Buddies, which is featured in one of my superintendent's reports previous this year. Some new partners, Junior Achievement, which made a presentation early in the school year and we heard earlier during the student advisory, or student council advisory report, that we have high school seniors, or high school students now going into our elementary schools and teaching our elementary school students, you know, financial literacy skills, which is outstanding to see kids teaching kids. And last but not least, we have Coaching for Change, which has been in the Taunton Public School, I believe, for several years. Also, I just wanted to make the committee and the community aware that we also have, we are also forming a new CIT, or we are bringing back a CIT that lost a little momentum due to pandemic. And this is the Bridge CIT. We are looking to develop programs for students who do not have a diagnosis, who could benefit from an alternative setting, again, not having a diagnosis or not requiring a diagnosis. So we know there are a lot of students who are struggling for whatever reasons, and we want to make sure that in the Taunton Public Schools, we have classrooms, we have spaces where we can address the individual needs of our students. So we will be bringing that CIT together. And I also am proud to announce, under the direction and leadership of Mr. Barata, we will also be putting together a professional development council, where we want to start planning out our professional development on a year-long basis and really making it, really making it geared towards our teachers with a potpourri of offerings that teachers can select. But we also understand that there is some professional development that is mandatory that teachers have to attend. So we really want to provide a well-rounded, robust professional development plan that will provide professional development to all six bargaining units, not just heavily focused on teachers. So that is a goal, to bring equity across the district when it comes to professional development. So with that, that concludes a summary of the programs that we have here in the Taunton Public Schools. We will post this presentation on our website so that the public has access. And we'll continue to do our best to make sure that these programs are communicated through the Welcome Center, through our guidance offices, through our offices in each building, so that families who need support for whatever reason know that the Taunton Public Schools, in collaboration with our partners on the city side, we're here to make sure that everyone has access and opportunity to the great resources, the abundance resources here in our community.
Okay, if there's nothing further, we're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Mayor.
Chairman DeMello.
Thank you, ma'am. So I think, you know, the superintendent nailed it, that the student supports are also family supports. And having it in one database on our website is critical for people to have access. I wish we had the funds and the resources available to send this to every household in the city of Taunton so they can have it on their kitchen tables or whatever. But it's something that, it's a collaboration effort. I've said it many times, we all agree it's a community effort. Mayor's office, city council, school committee, and we're lucky in the city of Taunton that we have the ability to support our students and our families. So thank you so much, Superintendent, for that presentation.
Thank you. And now we get to go to the superintendent's report.
So this is going to be probably a little different than what I've done in the past. You're going to hear a little bit from me, you're going to hear from our DEC advisor, and you're going to hear from our amazing students. So I'm proud to announce, in the first item in my superintendent's report, that Taunton High School senior Samuel Schumacher has been named a National Merit Scholarship finalist. And as I present this report, I think of a former school committee member who was very fond of Samuel and had a relationship with Samuel, and that was Mr. Martin. So I know Mr. Martin is looking down as I present this report, and he's very proud of Samuel, and he's very proud of the Taunton Public Schools because this is just an example, a snippet, of the amazing students that we produce here in the Taunton Public Schools. So the Taunton Public Schools and Taunton High School administration are pleased to announce that Taunton High School senior Samuel Schumacher has been named a National Merit Scholarship finalist. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition that recognizes students for their outstanding performance in, on the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. The National Merit Scholarship Committee has recognized over 3.3 million students and provided some 449,000 scholarships worth $1.8 billion. Recipients of the Merit Scholarship Awards, Achievement Scholarship Awards, and corporate sponsorship special scholarships have increased the nation's respect of intellectual accomplishments and have contributed significantly to the talent pool of future leaders here in our country. Samuel Schumacher, this is, this is an amazing statistic. Samuel Schumacher is among 15,000 students in the United States who qualified for the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program. He is a finalist. Typically, over one point more- Typically, over 1.5 million students in about 21,000 high schools enter the National Merit Scholarship Program. So of the 1.5 million, Samuel is now one of 15,000 kids. It is quite an honor to be named as a National Merit Scholarship Program finalist, as those who receive this recognition are the top 1% of all students nationwide who completed the PSAT. So of the 15,000 students, approximately 7,500 finalists will be selected to receive a National Merit Scholarship and earn the Merit Scholar title. Samuel has excelled in his academics and his extracurriculars while a student at Taunton High School. He received a National School Development Council's Award for Academic Growth and Scholarship Leadership and Learning, and is also a College Board AP Scholar. Accomplishments also include Skills USA District Conference Silver Medal in Medical Math, National Latin Exam Gold Summa cum laude award, the first place at the Massachusetts Region III Science Fair. He is also a Southeastern Massachusetts Conference Mathematical League All-Star, president of the Programming Club, and a tutor and a curriculum leader with Wave Learning Festival. I had to look up Wave Learning Festival. Wave Learning Festival is actually a program where students learn through different types of modules that are student-based. So he is an amazing young man, and again, just an example of the fine students that we produce here in our school system. Samuel has been accepted into several highly selective colleges. He hopes to major in computer science in college while minoring in mathematics. Remind you of anyone? Samuel is a brilliant, hard-working, studious young man who challenges himself academically and meets each challenge with success. He is a rare gem, and Taunton High School will greatly miss him at the graduation. And last but not least, most recently, Samuel also won the gold medal in the recent Skills USA competition. I'm out of breath, I need a break. Next, I'd like to, not to be outdone, in addition to Samuel, we also have some amazing DECA students who are here with us, or just a few of them are here with us this evening, along with their DECA advisor. So as a superintendent, and also as a father, I had one of my best weekends as a superintendent and dad in Taunton Public Schools. We had students participating at the Southeast Regional District Music Competition in Citu Rite, which I'll talk about next, but first, I'd like to focus on DECA. And Mr. McPhail, I'd welcome to the podium, and you can bring up your guests and talk about the outstanding weekend and the achievement that DECA achieved this weekend.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time. Before I introduce these excellent, excellent kids and students, as you can, you'll witness Emilia, and you'll know, and two of them are sitting also over there, Cole Gray and Hector Fonte, and I know they know their caliber as well. I'd like to thank you all, please, time. Number one, number two, thank you, Mayor O'Connell, for the signs around Taunton, that was a wonderful thing. I had no idea, because I don't drive by anything, and everybody told me, hey, congratulations, congratulations. Bridgette, like, did you see the sign? And I had no idea.
People were wondering why you kept driving around the green, and driving around the green.
I forgot to hit the mic.
Can you hear me now? All right, good, thank you. A couple of things I'd like to tie in to what Superintendent Cabral had mentioned. Couple of years ago, and I know, I think I mentioned this at the recognition ceremony that we had as well, you had a keynote speaker for the convocation, and it was online, it was virtual, but that guy, his opening remarks were basically, number one, forget about what you're giving them, just stay connected. And that's what I've been really trying to do over these two years. And these last two years, I've witnessed firsthand, and let me, I know you guys have heard about it, and you guys may have experienced it yourselves, but being in the classroom, I've witnessed firsthand the impact that this COVID pandemic has had on the mental health of all of our students, and teachers, and maybe you, okay? And that can't go ignored, and one of the things that I've really tried to do is make myself available. I'm not talking to my own horn, but last year, I was very proud that I only took one day off, and that was just to take my wife in for a check at Dana Farber, which was good. And this year, just because of my boat with COVID that I actually ended up with, that was the only, those were the only days I've really missed. And being here for the kids is most important, and I pride myself in being able to do that, and be able to do it through, not just my classes, but through DECA. And I know you guys have heard a million things about DECA, and all kinds of good stuff, and that's basically what keeps happening. It wouldn't be possible without your support, and you guys who have been on the board for a long time, you guys know what you guys have done for us, and I do too, and I really appreciate that, and it goes far with us, and I make sure these students know that, and I think it's clear, they can speak to how well I talk about you guys as far as the support that we get. Not all school districts provide the same kind of support, and it does make a difference. And that's why we've gone from, and you know, 15 students or so, 20 students or so, kind of participating in DECA here and there, to over 200 students as members, and they all pay to join this club. What teenagers are paying $30 to join a club where they have to take a test and go stressed out about a role play, if there wasn't something of value? And that value is my job. I have to sell that to them. And fortunately, I was pretty successful in sales. So it seems to work out. So I wanted to share that with you, and also, in light of what you also said, as far as the Junior Achievement and the Coaching for Change, I'm going to tuck DECA's horn a little bit, because back in the day, in order for those activities to come in, they had to come in through a club, and I was one of the first guys. Our DECA club was the first guy to do the shoe-a-thon, or whatever, that Coaching for Change needed to do in order to get them in the door, and we did that, and we got them in. And then they exploded, and they've done an amazing job. Marquis has done an awesome job as far as developing that program. And Junior Achievement, they use my room. And then there's three programs, and you mentioned the one where they're coming over here, and they'll be coming over here very soon, and that's, they use my room to do the training. And then they also are right now doing a business activity where they are selling lanyards. They would give them the $500 to do that, I'm sure you guys heard about that. We have two co-CEOs, and they've stepped up, and some, those students, they've turned a corner this past year, and I saw them last year, and this year is the big difference. And it's, I think it's because of the programs that we're offering. So, without further ado, I'm not going to take a lot of time, I'm going to read this very quickly, and I'm going to bring up these students, and they're going to share their experience with states, and what they're looking forward with in regard to ICDC, which is the International Career Development Conference, this year in Atlanta, April 22nd to the 27th. So again, thank you for your time. This year has been challenging, the team really had to pull together early on to get the necessary tasks done, and I would say that by about November, December, we're beginning to hit our stride. Would you guys agree? I think so. So far this year, we have launched two successful middle school programs with these students here, who actually have stepped up and participated in developing that. Freedman has about 58 students in the middle school who are participating in the middle school DECA program that we just started, and Parker has about 35. I only wanted about 10 per school as a pilot program, and they've exploded it. Hannah Kennedy at Parker, and Alexander Martin over at Freedman have done an outstanding job, and they just got to chaperone in Boston at the Mass DECA Conference, and they got to witness firsthand what the real conference is like. And what we're going to be doing is on Cinco de Mayo, we're going to be pulling those kids over to Taunton High School, and we're actually going to have a mock competition with real medals. We'll do a first, second, third, and then participants for everybody. They're all going to get T-shirts, it's going to be a good time. So if any of you would like to be there around 3 o'clock, please feel free to come by, okay? We ran, this year, we also earned the gold level for the Chapter of Excellence. There's 109 chapters, and only one gets the gold level. So we got the gold level this year at the Mass DECA Conference. We also ran a state officer. Now, I know that you guys know how to campaign. That's what this person had to do. They had to campaign, they had a table, they had a booth, they had to hook them in, they had a little team, they had to give a speech in front of 3,000 other students, a 30-second speech, introducing themselves and kind of declaring what they were campaigning on. You'd think that teenagers, they're going to vote for the cool guy, but they actually see through some of the shenanigans that these guys are pulling, they actually select people who are actually good caliber. And then they have to give a minute and a half speech to 600 voting delegates, and that's where they have to convince them, all along, being exhausted, going hungry, trying to campaign. I'm very proud that this year, we were able to elect our 13th Mass DECA State Officer from Taunton. It's our 13th one, okay? Hector, right now, serves as one of the Mass DECA State Officers, and has done an excellent job. He actually had to run the whole conference with his other team, with his team, but he did an outstanding job. But I am very proud to be able to say that Talia Nogera did an amazing job. Some of you who were at the mock DECA, the mock state's DECA conference, I had her give the speech, had them give the speech during that conference, during that activity, and I think you know, it was powerful. Yeah. So we're very proud of them. We are currently in second place in the country for the most money raised for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. We did that with our miles for MDA. Second is not good. We want first. And right now, we've got to catch up. We're going to put one more push on, so if you guys know any businesses who would like to donate around now, it's a good time, it's tax season, small or large, we'll have the, we're going to have the link posted, but we'll take checks too, made directly out to MDA, Muscular Dystrophy, okay? And we'd like to try to, right now, I know our first place is around 11,000, I think that's Virginia that I heard, but we got to, so we can do it, I know we could do it, and we can get close, but that will be recognized at ICDC in Atlanta. Our kids will be pulled down to the stage and recognized for their accomplishment of raising $7,000. And I will add, they were going to be recognized two years ago when we're going to go to Tennessee for raising about the same amount, but because that got canceled, we didn't get recognized. So, but so far, in the last few years, each time we've done that, we've raised seven grand, so about $14,000. Well, those are all good feathers in our cap. The best part about this past weekend for Taunton DECA was being together in person. Some of these students have never been to states, and some have never been anywhere. To see them all interacting with each other, and schools from around Massachusetts, was sincerely a joy. To hear them laughing hysterically, and I mean like belly laughing, I could hear it through my little walls in my room, I could hear them coming down the hallway before curfew, and they did, they had so much fun, and you guys are going to speak to this, because it's better to hear from them, you guys don't want to hear from me, you guys have heard enough from me, but sincerely, it was finally a joy to hear them in person, see each other, network, really experience what DECA is supposed to be. And so, to help us share us with that, I would like to introduce, just stand up, and if you guys could all stand here, and then just take a turn, share your experience, and what DECA means to you, and what you're looking forward to, and your experience at states, and maybe the impact that it has had, okay? Quincy Jones Sylvia, Joseph Kazloskas, Taylor Doherty, and Xavier Sandoval. Also Hector Ponte and Nicole Drake. All right, thank you, guys.
I just want to start by thank you guys all for your continued support. I know a lot of this wouldn't be possible for a lot of the kids. We have a ton of support from the school system, the school committee, of course, superintendent, with a lot of financial aid for a lot of our students, because this stuff can really get expensive. So having, knowing that we have the support of the whole school system, means a lot to, I know, it means a lot to Jesse, I know it means a lot to a lot of the DECA members. So just a little-
Sorry, you've known me since, I don't even need to, you keep calling me Jesse.
Sorry, Mr. McPhail, I apologize. But a little bit about this weekend, so this weekend, I participated in the professional selling event, which is essentially a sales presentation, and they always try to pick something that's pretty relevant to the business world, so last year, it was a virtual tour for our colleges, so, and this year was a virtual road race. So it's always something that simulates the way that the business world is working right now, and next year, maybe it'll be something translated to like a hybrid event, so half virtual, half in person, and it really forces kids to think about the way that the business world actually works, and it obviously allows them to create great presentation skills as you're presenting a real world, you pick a real business, and you present it to a judge, and everything is, it's really great, you know? You learn, you learn a lot, you have a lot, gain a lot of experience, and I think it's something that any kid can benefit from. Thank you.
Can I add that he received fifth in the state for his combined score? Joseph Kazloskas.
A little tall. Mayor O'Connell, John Cabral, thank you so much for having us here, I really appreciate it. I just want to touch on the fact that how DECA is so supportive throughout the city, not just the city, but also the school department, the school superintendent, everyone. Everybody loves DECA, and making it so affordable for everyone. Being at the state conference over this past weekend, I really learned the treachery that some of these kids go through to be able to afford to attend one of these conferences. For us, it feels like it's just another event, like going to districts for a weekend, we feel that it's very valuable because of the price, and we learn a lot from it, when some of these kids are really paying top dollar to go to these, not to say that we aren't, but we definitely do have a good year, and I just really wanted to say thank you for that, and we appreciate that. Over this past weekend, I competed in school-based enterprise food operations, so many of you guys may know the Tiger Den, the restaurant at Taunton High School. Basically, my job was to write a 10-page paper, basically saying what we're all about, what we do, and how we've adapted to the COVID-19 guidelines, and also coming out of it. So it was a very good experience for me, just not so much the presentation side, but also being able to write a paper that had financial literacy, and basically being able to speak professionally. I think that the presentation side of it was very good, and I ended up coming in third place overall in the state. I just want to say, from the bottom of my heart, thank you guys, and I really appreciate it.
Bailey Doherty.
Well, first of all, thank you for having us here, and thank you for your continuous support. It really doesn't go unnoticed, I know you're going to hear it probably a thousand more times, but we really do support it, and we acknowledge it, so thank you to all of you. So, what is DECA to me? It definitely is more than a club. Obviously, everyone's going to say that, it's very, you know, basic, but it really is, it's something that I go home and I focus on DECA. What is business? That sounds weird, because yes, I'm a teenager, but I do love it, it's fun, this is stuff that you're going to use outside of school. Once I graduate, what am I going to do? I actually want to go in my father's business, I want to become a seventh-generation dentist, so not very, not a lot of kids, I usually think will be like, oh, teeth, but that's me. And yeah, through marketing, through one of my classes, I get to take an internship, so I actually get to go to my father's business and his office, and get to see the behind-the-scenes of a business, and it's petrifying, a lot of papers that need to be scanned, but it's fun, and I love seeing the behind-the-scenes of what a business really is. So for me, I am VP of Training, and it's amazing getting to go to Freedman and see these little kids talking about business, and why they should make a sandwich, and how I should buy it for $500, which they do it, they do it. It's a top-notch bread, and you have to get it, and they fall in love with it, and it's so fun seeing them put together a big tent of all these things, and how we should buy it for $120. And I actually had one kid come up to me, because I was a storeperson, selling them all the equipment, and she said, you know, I have a, you should give me a discount. I said, well, why is that? And she said, oh, I have the credit card to your company, so I should get a certain percentage off. I was like, you're in middle school, how do you know what that is? But it just shows that these kids are really learning something, it's beyond anything that I could have imagined. And also, so what is DECA for me? I'm a fifth-year member, and at states, I competed in community giving project. So it actually started in my marketing class, where I started it, with the Taunton Animal Shelter, I helped raise over $2,000 selling delicious Buckeyes, if any of you know what that is, it's peanut butter balls covered in chocolate, and they're delicious. And I also helped to donate 200 pounds of cat food to the shelter, as well as leashes and different equipment blankets to help, and I actually got to place top six at state, so I am moving on to nationals. This is all because of DECA. I wouldn't have called them and been like, hey, so what do you need, if it wasn't for this class. And I also got to help write a 20-page report for our infamous Tiger Shack, and we got to place top three, which was amazing, and it just shows you the opportunities that kids my age get to go into, even eighth graders, because we do get the eighth graders in high school, so it really does, it's an amazing thing. So thank you.
Xavier Sandoval.
Thank you, Mr. McPhail, and thank you all for coming out. So my experience this past weekend at states was incredible. Not only did I get to compete in the Innovation Plan category, which is a written, it's a 10-page thing, on a local business, but on top of that, I was also a voting delegate for the upcoming state officers, and on top of that, I was elected as the masked, as one of the six Mass DECA social media correspondents. So with that, I went around the entire facility, and I took pictures, and I helped post on the social medias, and honestly, that was probably my favorite part of the whole event, because that allowed me to meet so many people and create so many friendships, and I know that's going to, I know that's going to last forever, and that's one of my favorite things from that experience, and I will carry that over with the ICDC conference coming up next month, and I just, I just can't wait to see what DECA, what else DECA has in store with the new young members coming in, and the people that are interested in these officer positions, and you'll see a bunch of new faces on the officer team, and I just can't wait, I just can't wait for them to grow. So thank you all, and thank you.
Thank you, David.
So that's a little bit about what we do. I mean, you can see right from them, you guys can make your own determination about the quality and the impact that DECA has. I think that for most, and I can tell story after story, I have images of- I think that for most, and I can tell story after story, I have images of kids' faces throughout the years, who have come in, and Hector knows, they were quiet, shy, couldn't, you know, talk to anybody, and all of a sudden, they, they just catch on, and somebody just takes them in, and we give them a pathway, and it's a safe pathway, they feel safe, and they run with it. And that's really what we do, and you guys provide the means for that to be able to happen. So great, I'm great, very grateful, thank you very much for your time. If you guys have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Mr. McPhail.
All right, thank you so much.
I wanna thank the students also, and I see some proud parents back there as well. It's, it's really inspiring to hear them talk with such enthusiasm about the DECA program, and the fact that it's extra work, like, and they're saying, I get to write a paper, and I get to do this, that, that's pretty amazing to hear that. But the benefits are just countless, I guess, you know, it's, it gives them that confidence, the real-life skills, involvement in the community, raising money, and getting involved. So there are, there are just so many, many benefits to being in DECA, and what these kids get out of it, to set them up for success in life. So thank you, Jesse, for all the work you and your team are doing in the program, and we really thank the students for participating in the program, because it is extra work for them.
Excellent, thank you very much. Thank you, guys, thank you.
Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So I wore my blue blazer and my-
I see the pin, I saw that pin, yeah, I think you all have one, by the way.
I wear it on many occasions, and have had the great fortune of serving as a judge in the Mark interviews, and am so impressed by every student that comes before me, just like real professionals in the real world, which we are in the real world, but they're a little bit different level. But thank you so much for everything that's been shared tonight, and I know all of the committee members fully support DECA, and we wish you the best of luck in the upcoming competitions in Atlanta.
I really appreciate it, thank you.
And bring back, championship back to Taunton.
Hopefully, we will, I think we will. We have a good shot, we really do. Yeah, thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
I think the last time New England sent a team down to Atlanta, we won a Super Bowl.
I think you're right, we will be in the Mercedes-Benz Stadium.
No pressure.
Yeah, I think you're right. Okay, yeah, we will be in Mercedes-Benz Stadium, by the way, for the opening and closing session, so that'll be fun. And nice, so, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McPhail. So again, it was a great weekend for the Taunton Public Schools, as a superintendent and as a parent, and I'm also proud to announce that we had sixteen Taunton High School students in grades eight through twelve, who qualified for the Junior Southeast District Music Festival, which was held on Saturday, March twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Now, I would have had Mr. Beltrum and Mr. McKenzie present this evening, but they had two concerts on Monday and Tuesday, which was our All-City Music Festival. Our All-City Music Festival took on a different format this year, the All-City Music Festival was more like a bandstand setup, where we had three separate bands performing in the high school gym, facing one complete set of bleachers. So I believe over two nights of concerts, there were nearly maybe seven, eight hundred students performing between chorus and band. And as a school system, I believe, and don't quote me on this, but I believe it's about twelve percent of our student body, we have about eight thousand kids, about twelve percent of our student body participates in the performing arts. So I also left on the table, I believe Wendy left on the table for you, the program from the music festival. And in the near future, I will invite Mr. Beltrum, Mr. McKenzie, and the teachers who run our amazing performing arts program, I'll invite them in the future to give a presentation. So I would just like to mention the names of the students who participated in the district festival. Mixed chorus soprano from Taunton High School, Talia Cooper, Alexa Malanato, Hannah Oler, mixed chorus alto, Shelby German, Olive Nemo, Nala Veni, mixed chorus tenor, with Jamina Athas, Danica Corpus, concert band oboe, Elena Moraska, concert band bassoon, Daniel Leno, concert band clarinet, Delilia Podgowski, concert band trumpet, Adam Pereira and Keheen Oskin, concert band trombone, Garrett Mijak, concert band baritone, I'm not, I'm gonna skip this name, and orchestra, French horn, Benjamin Rabel. So we have some outstanding students in the band and chorus, and again, that's just sixteen out of nearly eight hundred kids who participate in the performing arts. And the last item in my superintendent's report is an ask of the school committee. So I'm asking, and well, maybe I should make you aware of where we are. So as you are aware, Director of Transportation, Student Services Kathleen Callahan has announced, Kathleen Perry has announced her retirement. So with the screening committee has gone through the qualified candidates, and has conducted the initial interviews, and has narrowed the pool down to two qualified individuals. So I am asking the committee, because I know everybody wants to participate in this, and we can only have four or less, because more than four would be a quorum, so I'm asking the committee to nominate individuals to serve on the second round of interviews that will make a recommendation to me for the final interview, which is my appointment. So the final or the second interview will take place either Tuesday, March fifteenth, or Thursday, March seventeenth, depending on the availability of committee members who can join the initial screening and interview committee. March, next week. Sorry, sorry, my apology. March, Tuesday would be the twenty-second or the twenty-fourth, thank you for that catch. So March twenty-second or March twenty-fourth of next week will be, depending on the availability of the committee members who wish to serve on this, so I would entertain a nomination, or if there are four members or less who wish to serve on this committee, you will join the initial screening committee, interview committee for the second interview, and ultimately make the recommendation to me for the final interview. They will be at four and five o'clock.
Colleagues, any nominations?
I'll participate in the nomination. Do you want to name, or is it voluntary to name?
I nominate, I nominate Louie Laura.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to nominate Mr. Laura, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Any other, anyone else that would like to be nominated?
Mayor, I would like to be nominated.
Aye as well.
So let's take a motion for Mr. DeMello.
Can we do two?
And do both?
Yeah, yes. So there's a motion, okay, motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. All right, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Okay, administrative business, staffing report.
See if we place down file.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Subcommittee reports, finance and law, Mr. Fiori.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the finance and law subcommittee met this evening with myself and Mr. DeMello. There were no student activity funds to be replenished, there were two bill payable warrants, one was billed for fifteen, for twelve thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-nine cents from fiscal year twenty-one, from W.B. Mason for supplies, and then a warrant for fiscal year twenty-two of seven hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred eighty-three dollars and nineteen cents. Those were both approved. Then we received the invoice for legal services for special education for January in the amount of eight thousand, eighty-two dollars and ninety cents, which brings a year to date total of twenty thousand, six eighty-nine, fifty-one, and we note that compared with what the district was spending prior to this contract, it's considerable savings. And the meeting adjourned.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Motion to accept the report.
Can I get a second? Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Unit A Teachers Subcommittee, Mrs. Fagan.
Yes. Unit A Teachers Subcommittee, which includes myself, Mr. DeMello, and Mr. George, met Monday in a long session, over six hours, we started at eight-thirty, ended a little after three, with the teachers, and negotiations are ongoing, we have another meeting scheduled for this coming Monday.
Okay, motion, to accept the report?
Motion to accept the report.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. New business, Taunton Public Schools enrollment update.
I just wanted to bring to the committee's attention, also make the public aware, that if you look at the cover memo provided to me by Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Donna Moynihan, if you just pay attention to the charts, the second column on the chart, October two thousand nineteen, that was our enrollment pre-pandemic, and you see, pre-pandemic, we were at eight thousand and twenty-seven students, which was a net gain of eighteen students from the previous October one report. Fast forward to the first, to the pandemic, and we were at seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-one students, which was a loss of almost three hundred students in the Taunton Public Schools. So this year, when we conducted our October one report, we saw an increase, we were expecting to be closer to the pandemic levels of two thousand nineteen, but you'll notice that we were, you know, just a slight modest increase of thirty-two students. But as Mrs. Moynihan details in the memo, this information is submitted to Desi on every six months, so March first, the Taunton Public Schools submitted a new enrollment report, and I provided you with the backup on the second page by grade level. And you can see that we've actually increased by a hundred and fifty-one students over a six-month period, and we are closing in, we're about a hundred students shy of where we were during the pandemic, or before the pandemic. So I just wanted to make you aware of the, our enrollment is increasing, I think we're gonna continue to see many families moving into our community. And I also think, when you look at the enrollment reports that Donna Binns provides on a monthly basis, we might wanna start taking a look at enrollment in all our schools, and start doing a thorough analysis, and looking at ways in which we can balance enrollment across our schools, and continue to maintain low class sizes throughout the school system. So that's probably something that we should recommend to long-range planning, or maybe to special programming, but we can decide that at a later date. But I just wanted to make the committee aware and the public aware that we are about a hundred students shy from where we were pre-pandemic, so that, that's good for the Taunton Public Schools, and I just wanted to let you know, as a school committee, that we continue to monitor our class sizes and our enrollment very closely.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Next is the, oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Fagan?
Just a quick question, the students that came back, were they the students that were already here, or they were entirely new students? What, do you have a percentage breakdown?
I'd have to speak to Mrs. Perry, and also to Mrs. Moynihan, who did the analysis.
Okay.
I don't have that information.
Some kids left, though, and didn't come back, right? Some, some took a long time coming back because of the mask situation?
Well, when I do my budget presentation, or when we do our budget presentation in April, which is that first meeting in April, I'm gonna share some slides that a, that were shared with us on the state budget, and they also cover student enrollment and how it impacted chapter seventy. Massachusetts enrollment did decrease, but New England enrollment stayed the same or increased. So what we saw in Massachusetts was a lot of students moved to surrounding New England states, and I'll provide you with that information. So I do believe there is a segment of families who either went private, I do believe there's a segment of families who chose to remain virtual, 'cause there are more programs being held virtual, as you have more families working from home, so parents have that, have that option. So we shouldn't be naive, and we shouldn't shy away from the fact that parents continue to have choice, parents continue to have options. And that's why I feel it's very important, as a school system, that we continue to remain at the forefront, and continue to provide our students and our families with high-quality, evidence-based curriculums, we continue to provide amazing programs to engage our kids in the school, because there's gonna be competition within the community, and also competition in the state, to try to pull kids away from the Taunton Public Schools. But, long story short, Mrs. Moynihan, Mrs. Fagan, I don't have that information available, but I can prepare something for a future meeting.
I'm, I'm just curious about one thing, you, what you get for chapter seventy, though, it's based on the October enrollment, right? So if a hundred more kids come after, you're really not getting covered for them, right?
We're not, but if you add two hundred more students to next October's October one report, and you factor in the inflation factor, plus the second year of the Student Opportunity Act, we could forecast, Mrs. Moynihan could forecast what our chapter seventy would look like for fiscal twenty-
Four.
Four.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Status of school choice, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, annual vote.
This is something that we do annually, and it requires a vote of the board, for the Taunton Public Schools to continue to remain a choice district, so I would ask that the, that someone make that in the form of a motion that'd be seconded, that the Taunton Public Schools vote in favor of remaining a school choice district.
I would move that we vote to continue as a school choice district.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted, thank you. Unfinished business, proposed school year calendars, we're just receiving that?
Actually, we could take a, we could take action this evening, so Mrs., Mrs. Perry, I got her name right tonight, one out of three, Mrs. Perry has spoken with all the unions, three have responded, and three are responded, and the teachers' union being the group that has the largest membership. Of those that have responded, they have voted in favor of option one for FYI, for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and they have voted in favor of option one for two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. So it would be appropriate, if the committee chooses to take action this evening, to make a motion to approve option one for two thousand twenty-three, and option one for two thousand twenty-four.
Mrs. Fagan?
Is that also your recommendation?
That is also the administration's recommendation.
All right, then I, I move that we accept their-
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Question on that, may I just ask a question?
Opposed? None opposed, so voted.
That's twenty-two and twenty-three.
And twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right, okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Gives parents an opportunity to plan out two years.
Yep.
Is there a library media specialist update?
I would ask Mr. Barata to provide everyone with an update, please.
Absolutely, thank you, everyone. As, as you are aware, we tried to reinstate the library positions back in, providing our students with certified library media specialists. So last fall, we did post a position in which we only received one internal candidate who did not meet the criteria for certification. We then posted out in school spring, between that next wave, we had thirteen candidates apply, with only three of them which were viable. One was concerned about it being a one-year position, and bowed out, and the other one chose to stay local in the district and town that they were currently employed in. We then tapped into Simmons College, which has an unbelievably solid reputation for library sciences, posted on their board, we were able to garner at that point three candidates, two of which were viable. One lived in Clinton, Massachusetts, and I, and I spoke to, she actually drove out here and loved the community, she was nervous about the one-year position and leaving a position out there and saying, I'm going to move, the city looks great, I'd love to be there, but it's too volatile of a situation for me to, to lose, or to leave the position I'm in. And the other one, after initial interest voiced in emails between ourselves, when I did try to leave phone messages, never responded. So our human resource department will be once again posting on school spring in Simmons, and given the fact that it's spring semester now, we believe we'll probably get more interest in, in the position for the library and media specialists.
Thank you, Ms. Barata.
And if I could also just add, when Mrs. Moynihan and I conduct our budget workshop with the school committee, we will share with you some of our thoughts regarding this position, and how we can offer those who are applying for these, for these positions more security.
Question for me.
Mr. Laura?
Thank you. Well, that was a one-year position? That was offered to the lady from Clinton.
That was all part of the ESSER funding, which is year by year. So when the question, when, when, which is a normal question that, that even our in-district educators ask, when it's grant-funded, what does that mean? The connotation, if the grant ends, will I be able to maintain, correct?
Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. So are we doing this senior library media specialist, one specialist only, or are we looking for multiple?
There was multiple, I believe it was six at the time.
Right, that's what I remembered.
Did we put it there, right?
And we couldn't even get one yet to commit.
That is correct.
Okay, so I think it's something we definitely need to discuss coming up with our new budget deliberations concerning that.
And, and that is actually, we took input from Simmons College itself, saying, you know, was our original posting description too restrictive, and they gave some advice as to the phrase, phrases that we-
as to the phrase, phrases that we might want to put out there to garner more interest.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. COVID-19 dashboard looks to be informational?
Informational. The numbers continue to trend in a positive direction.
Thank you. Anything on the action item review list?
Move to discuss.
All right. Then we will move on to executive session.
Yeah. So, um, I'm, uh, a motion to go into executive session would be order, and that motion is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with non-union personnel seeking recognition pursuant to exemption three, general laws, chapter 38, section 21A3, and to reconvene in open session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Oh, roll call. I'm sorry, roll call.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Chairman DeMello?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Yes.
It'll be back in open session shortly. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, so, uh, coming back, uh, into regular session, Mrs. Fagan, I'd like to have a, uh, motion, uh, from the floor to return back to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Fagan, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
And Mr. DeMello?
Yes. Uh, so, uh, we have a report out from our executive session. Mr. Vera, would you like to report out, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to voluntarily recognize the ABA therapists as a bargaining unit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes. And I think that's it for now. Do we have any press? No press time?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Have a good night, everybody. Happy St. Patty's Day. Thank you.